I'll start, um, Charles Funk, Chair.
Judy Austin, Town Clerk. I mean, excuse me, Clerk.
Angie DeSanto, regular member.
Carl Fallsgraph, regular member.
Carl's neighbor, Garth Bean, regular member.
John Kopeck, alternate.
Jesse Burnham, regular member, but volunteering to be unseated for this meeting since I'm on my way in to work.
Do you take a kayak to work, Jesse? It looks like it.
That would be more enjoyable.
Um, okay, I'm just making sure I've got everything in order here. Uh, I'm gonna seat, uh, John Kopeck for Jesse Burnham. Uh, communications. Uh, the only communication I have, uh, is an apology for our last, the, the snafu with our last meeting. Uh, what I can tell you is that we have decided to try to put at least some, uh, new, uh, procedures to help us verify, uh, that the meeting agendas are staying on the website. So, um, Cheryl and, uh, the town clerk have come up with a, a different system to sort of check and verify. Uh, and also my understanding is, is that we're in communication with the IT group that helps administer our website, um, to see if, uh, you know, they can help us in some form as well. Cheryl, anything to add to that?
Oh, that's, that's pretty much it.
Okay. Um, public comments? Good. I like those kind. Um, approved minutes of regular meeting of, uh, August 30th, uh, 2020. Uh, the, the, it was a, a great set of minutes. I applaud Valerie for this particular set, which were not easy. Uh, the only, uh, thing that I would like to add is essentially, and I don't know how to, how to label this, but I'm, I'm gonna call it something like a footnote, um, to the page three motion, where it says, Mr. Fallsgraph moved and Ms. DeSanto seconded a motion that the Board of Selectmen may authorize a special appropriation from the unassigned fund balance in the amount of $125,000 to satisfy the 2020 steep grant application in order to repair the Pompey Hollow sidewalks and ramps motion pass unanimously. The only footnote to that motion that I'd like to make is, um, that the Selectmen utilize Executive Order 7S subset S, um, to authorize that. So it's just a note, I know that it's in the, um, in the agenda description, uh, but I, I just wanna make sure that people understand that that, that was how, the motion was, was authorized through, uh, the executive order from, um, the governor.
So that's 7S subset S?
Uh, yeah, the way it's written is seven capital S and then in brackets and parentheses, uh, S. Actually, just like you have it in the, uh, in the minutes of that meeting, Valerie.
Okay.
Uh, otherwise, I, I was, I didn't see anything that I felt compelled to modify. Anybody else see anything?
Nope.
No.
So I'll need somebody to make a motion, um, to accept those minutes with that one footnote.
Carl Fallsgraph, so moved.
Second.
Who seconded?
Angie DeSanto.
Thank you, Angie. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes.
Probably Garth abstain because I wasn't here.
Jesse and I abstain as well.
All right. Um, Jesse, I'm, I, I, uh, this is just a point of clarification. I'm thinking that you are a participant in this meeting, but you're not seated because I have John seated for you. So I don't think you have the ability to vote one way or the other.
I was thinking I did because I thought alternates still voted on minutes even if they weren't seated. But either, either way, whatever you put down, I'm fine.
Yep.
I wasn't at the meeting, so I.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Um, new business, uh, review and approve fiscal year end of June 30th, uh, 2020, uh, budget adjustments. We'll start with the general government budget. Um, if you've, uh, looked at that paperwork, um, the synopsis that we're really looking at or, or acting on is on page 11. It's the last page. Um, and so we're looking at the net, uh, uh, the increase to networking budget amount, and we're looking at the decrease of networking budget amounts. And those are the things that were, that were, um, reviewing and, um, and approving. Uh, Cheryl, are you able to, uh, give, uh, our group a, a synopsis of, of why we have to do this? And, um, uh, if there's anything in here that stands out to you that we should pay attention to?
Um, well, we have to do this because we cannot, we can overspend our lines, but we can't overspend our departments. So any department that had overspent, um, we went in and adjusted, uh, by using funds from departments that, uh, had an excess of funds available. Um, and the only thing that, that, um, excuse me, um, really stands out, of course, would be the COVID expenditures. That's new. Um, uh, transfer station was, um, over budget because of all the additional, um, people using it and cleaning out their sheds. And, um, excuse me, planning and zoning, uh, was over budget because of a retirement of a combination building official, planning and zoning enforcement officer. So we went from having that one person to contracting out for our building official and our zoning enforcement. But we were able to offset those expenditures by the, um, the building officials' payroll account and, um, health and dental insurance and retirement program that was not used because he did retire early in the year.
Uh, excellent. That was one of my question marks was, why, why are we digging into retirement programs? So, so that's why. That's good. Thank you. Um, uh, the only other question I have for you, Cheryl, uh, on this, uh, everything else makes sense to me. The only question I had was the, um, COVID expenses, related expenses. Are these expenses that, um, we could potentially be reimbursed for at some point? Or, or what are you, what are you thinking about those?
They, uh, are potentially going to be reimbursed. I submitted to FEMA for, um, for the initial amount through June 30th. And, um, out of the about $12,000 that we submitted, they had, um, rejected over $7,000 of it. But, um, I did plead our case and they sent, uh, another, um, request through their portal for more information. And I filled that out this week and we'll see what happens.
Yep. Okay.
And then, once we have, um, our final answer from FEMA, then we can apply to the state for another 25%.
Okay. All right. So, uh, these are, and again, I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding and, and that the group that's here is understanding. Um, these COVID-related expenses are from, uh, let's say February, when things started to happen, through June 30th. And then you've picked up more expenses moving into the fiscal year that we're in now.
Some, yes.
Okay. So those are, those are gonna be like, uh, a, a group of expenses that we're trying hopefully to get some sort of relief from either FEMA or the state or whatever.
Yes. Most, most of our expenses were before June 30th, between, um, March and June 30th. So that would, this would be the, the biggest piece for us. Now there's another, there was the next storm, uh, that we have a sizable, um, senior request, uh, pending. But that's this fiscal year.
Yep. Okay. All right. Very good. So are you thinking that there's still ongoing COVID expenses? So as an example, this particular meeting where we have Michael here, that's an expense due to, due to that. Are, are we still tracking those?
Yes.
Okay. And what's your, what's your instinct, or you just have no idea whether we're gonna be reimbursed or not?
I, I have no idea. They, they told us specifically to, uh, apply for some things, like all the plexiglass barriers that we put up, and then they denied them. So, uh, it was a whole lot of work and, and, uh, a lot of frustration learning their whole portal. And then, uh, I did not react well when I got the news.
So, but that, uh, just to, just, uh, to clarify, that's still an ongoing process. Even though they've rejected it, you, we may still see those reimbursements at some point.
Yes.
Okay.
I had, I had an opportunity to plead our case.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Uh, does anybody else have any other questions on this front? So basically, we're looking at about $94,703 that, uh, we need to, um, uh, move from, um, you know, one account, from one account to other accounts, or several accounts to the other accounts to balance things. Is there anything that anybody else wants to ask, a specific question? Uh, and if not, then what I need is someone to make a motion, uh, uh, to, um, approve the fiscal year end adjustments, um, as presented, uh, for the July 1st, uh, 2019, June 30th, 2020, um, fiscal year.
Carl Fallsgraph, so moved.
John Kopeck, second.
Thanks, John. Any other, um, conversation, questions? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Motion passes. The second part of, uh, 6A is, uh, capital projects, uh, the fiscal year end, uh, closing adjustments. Um, Cheryl, do you want to speak to this particular, uh, document and just, uh, give the group, uh, understanding of why, again, why we do what we're doing?
Uh, so these are our capital projects for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020. And, uh, when a project is completed and we're, we're, well, we want, we want to close it out. So, uh, in that case, we would close it out if there is, or the Board of Finance will close it out. If there are any funds left in the account, they can be moved to CNR. So that would increase CNR. Um, some projects are overspent, um, like, um, I think the school bus was overspent by a little, um, which had to do with the warranty and the registration. So in that case, we would, um, request funds from CNR to cover that, uh, overage. And then some are, um, pro, some are projects that will just be completed and the money goes back to CNR. And, uh, a couple of them, three of them, uh, have ongoing projects. So we don't wanna close the project. We want to continue it into the next fiscal year. So this authorizes us to, um, move that money forward to the 2020, 2021 fiscal year.
Thank you. Um, I personally have looked this over. I have really no questions. It's all pretty straightforward as far as I'm concerned. Uh, so I don't know if any of you have any questions, but it, what we will need is a motion, uh, to approve as presented capital projects fiscal year end 2020 closing adjustments. Um.
So moved.
Okay. Thanks, Angie. Um, do I have a second?
Second, Carl Fallsgraph.
Thanks, Carl. Uh, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. Thank you. Um, the next agenda item is review expenditure and revenue. Uh, just as a reminder, um, this is for the current fiscal year that we're in. Uh, so the, the document's relatively new because we're, we're, we're newly into, uh, uh, our fiscal year. So, you know, again, I just would like us to be in the habit of taking a look at these and sort of, you know, on occasion, if you see something that you sort of wanna understand a little bit more, um, now's a, a really good time.
So Chuck, I have a question. So, uh, your message from August 25th had two attachments and both of them were fiscal year 20. I don't see anything for 2021. Uh, should I?
Yeah. So what it, what it says, it, so we are in the fiscal year 2021, but what the document will say is on the right-hand side, just under the page number, it says period July 2020 to August 2020. So that's, that's the amount of information that we currently have.
Uh, hang on.
Yep.
The video, the, the audio went a little too fluty. Uh, are you talking about the, the email message from August 25th? And I'm supposed to find something there?
So there should have been a PDF that you could have, uh, downloaded or, or whatever that had an expenditure and revenue.
Yeah. I had two things. One said cap in budget and the other said general budget adjustments.
Oh, so that's just what we just had. That's what we just did.
Those two?
Yes.
Okay. And it was something else. I never got it. I don't know why. I don't, oh, I see it.
Okay.
General funds. Is that it? PDF?
Yep.
Now I got it. Okay.
Okay.
I don't know why I didn't see that.
No, no worries. I'm glad you asked. I, I, I apologize for not getting it out in a smoother, uh, uh, way, but, uh, it's sort of, uh, the best that I can do at this point.
So this is for the current fiscal year?
Correct. So.
Oh, I did, I didn't look it over.
Okay. So, and, and this is not a problem, Angie. It's why we do, we try to do it every month as best we can to just sort of take a look, which was my point. This is early on. We're not gonna probably see a lot right at the moment. But it's just to kinda see, you know, what's, what's going on. So. So as an example, just, just, I, I have two. Um, one would be if we were sort of paying attention to things. Um, one, and again, it's the very first line item. It says first selectman. One of the things that you'll see is that there's no balance remaining. Uh, and the reason for that is because we've encumbered the dollars. So when you're thinking about this, you realize that we don't have a first selectman right at the moment. So, so a natural question would be, um, why is that encumbered in zero balance? Well, there's an answer to that, but it, but it's a valid question. Does, does that make sense to everybody?
And the answer is?
Um, so basically what, what that means is that Cheryl hasn't gotten to making that adjustment yet because we don't, we don't know exactly what's going on with the first, uh, select person yet.
Okay.
So she's got a lot of other things to do. So a question would be, well, why is that like that? And the answer would be because she hasn't gotten to changing it yet, but she's aware of it.
Okay. Sounds like the good explanation to me.
So one of the things that I did notice, uh, Cheryl, again, on the first page, was under current expenditures, uh, we have, uh, under town council, we have, uh, legal and engineering. Um, is that what, do you know what that is? And why it's as large as it is?
Yes, I know what that is. Yes, that is, um, uh, the GIS system and the, um, town engineer that we share with the NICOG group.
And what, what function are they performing that, that we're all benefiting from?
Engineering. Whatever needs to be engineered. I don't know. I don't handle that hard.
Is, is that a fee that we have to pay to, 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 uh, utilize their services? Is that what that means?
It's a per capita fee for both.
Okay.
So you pay based on your population, set fee that NICOG sets every year. And, um, all of the, the NICOG towns sharing it. And if you need engineering with, oh, what were they just talking about? So, since the steep grant.
Yeah.
That we would utilize, um, Sal Polly, the engineer, to, to do whatever that, that project is. Sorry, that's my mom. She knows I'm in a meeting.
Could you mention the project again as an example, Cheryl?
One of the projects in the steep grant, it's S T E A P, Small Town Economic Assistance Program.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm assuming, um, under revenues at this point, we're just way too early to know anything about anything with revenue.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I will say, um, tax collection is good, um, even considering there was the deferral available for people. Uh, and we did get our first town aid road payment, but that went into capital.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. I had noticed that, um, uh, it looked really good. The amount that people were, were paying in, which is, which is great. The other thing that was kind of impressive too is how much she's gotten from prior year levy already. So that's, 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 these are on page two of the, um, revenue document, uh, what we're talking about. So. Any other questions about expenditure revenue?
Um, are there any, uh, programs or anything that aren't happening that there's savings or changing budgets? Or, um, you, you're not able to follow through. For instance, my understanding is the senior center really isn't functioning the way it usually does. And I'm not sure why the expenses are still so high on something that isn't really functioning much.
Which expenses are you referring to, Angie?
Um, well, uh, whatever they are, I, I, I can't remember. I, it's somewhere. In other words, um, we're keeping the senior center open, but nobody goes there?
She performs things, um, other than just having people in the building. She's been providing meals and such. And she's given other, um, other projects, but mostly, um, it would be program expense.
That's the only thing you could save on because there, there were no programs happening.
Right. But.
Okay.
So that you won't connect the revenue and you won't spend the expenditures either. Some of, not all of them are income generating, the programs that the senior center runs. So there will still be some program expense, even if there are no revenues. But she actually does have some online classes, uh, that she's sponsoring. So there, she does have a little revenue from that.
Okay. So it's, it's business as usual, except nobody's really going there.
Nothing's as usual.
Got it.
Good question, Angie. Thank you.
Yep.
Um, I don't know. I don't think Jesse's still with us. Uh, so I think, uh, fiscal year 18, 19, town annual report update will skip till the next meeting. Uh, and the la, the next agenda item is, uh, update on the Combined Finance Department Committee. And I think that, um, John is still here. Um, hold on. One sec, John. Um, Jesse, are you there?
He's trying to connect.
Yep. Man, I love virtual meetings. This is just so awesome.
Isn't it? I was noticing Judy's, um, fan.
A little undulating dots. Oh, Judy!
You're really there. We thought your fan was standing in for you.
I tried to prop it, but it keeps sliding, so I just left it alone.
Jesse, can you unmute yourself?
It's a very handsome fan, I must admit.
I, I received a phone call just as I rejoined the meeting.
Oh, fantastic. So hey, um, if you have one second, um, do you have anything as far as an update on the annual report?
Um, nothing new. Where it stands is the person that said they'd help me, um, put together the dedication, um, hasn't gotten back to me by phone or by email.
Okay, that's an ongoing problem.
Yes. So with that being said, um, if that person doesn't get in contact with me soon, I'm thinking that we need to just change who we're dedicating it to and move on.
Okay. All right. Good, good thought, Jesse. And, um, and what I would suggest is, is, a, as I've said to you, I think before, uh, if you decide to go that route, um, I would, I would just quickly touch base with, um, Chris Avikoff, who is sort of has her finger on the pulse of everything.
Okay. Yeah, it sounds like a good deal.
All right. Um, uh, anything else?
Um, no. Um, I think that's pretty much settled it. I think, I'm pretty sure, um, it's waiting on that dedication and it can pretty much be finalized.
All right. That'll be great if we can get that to happen because we're like, uh, uh, a hair's breadth away from the next one we have to do.
Definitely.
All right. Thanks, Jesse.
All right. Thanks.
Um, so next agenda item is update on Combined Finance Department, uh, Committee. Uh, John. John, I was sorry to interrupt you. What's your thoughts on that these days?
Well, I, as far as an update goes, I have information I would share, but I'd rather share it offline first before we share it publicly.
Yep, that's fine.
And beyond that, there's no, no critical updates.
Okay, have you been able yet to have a, some sort of meeting with that group, which is Angie, yourself, the two members of the Board of Education and one of the select persons?
Not since the first meeting.
Okay, are, are you comfortable facilitating a Zoom meeting with those group, those folks? If we could, if we could get you an avenue to do that?
If, if it comes to that, I guess so. I'd prefer the meetings to be in person. I was really hoping that we would be closer to that at this point than we are.
Yep.
So we'll, we'll see where we get from here.
Okay, alright, very good. Thank you.
Yep.
You're there, Carl? Agenda items for the next meeting, I have no idea. We'll figure it out when we get there.
I was just gonna say, yeah, I was gonna say last time and then I wasn't able to. Are we moving forward with the audit?
Yes.
Almost.
Yes, the audit is underway. I don't have an update at this point, but that will definitely be an agenda item for our next meeting to see how things, how things are progressing and
Yep.
what things need to be tweaked or who needs to be nudged. And we'll, we'll see where we're at at that point.
Yeah, and it's nice and early. I mean, this is starting early. That's great.
There are things that are already supposed to be due. And so my understanding is that they're, well, we'll, we'll talk about it at the next meeting.
Okay.
You know, it's not an agenda item for this one and this is a special meeting. So I, I think we'll make that an agenda item for the next meeting is, is an update on the audit and see, you know, what, what may need to happen.
When is that meeting, Chuck?
I don't remember. Cheryl, do you happen to remember?
Sorry, I do not remember.
Yeah, I don't remember, Angie.
Okay.
I think it's, I think it's in a, in a, it might be next week or the week after. Probably the week after.
Not a problem.
September 10th.
Oh, it's usually the second and fourth of the month.
But this one's just the.
Okay.
No, 10th and 24th.
Good, thank you.
So yeah, the 10th, alright, good. So. Remarks for the good of the board?
Nice short meeting.
I just want to thank all of you for your patience with this particular meeting. I know it got a little screwed up, but I really applaud all of your willingness to hang with us and do the things that we need to do for, for the board and for the town. So, you know, I really applaud all of you for, for hanging in there.
Well, back at you, Chuck. It's not a big deal for us. You guys, you and Cheryl had to go through all the stress, so.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate.
John?
Thanks, Carl. Do we have a second? Was that John?
Yep.
Alright, very good. Thanks, John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone.
Aye and bye.
Bye. Judy, your cat's hysterical.
I'm sorry.
Your cat made me.